All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Chair. We are ready to go and I'll keep an eye out for Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and welcome back, everyone, to the afternoon portion of the Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and I'm joined with Vice Chair Willie, Commissioner Nafisifi, and Commissioner Pam Treese. And we're hoping that Commissioner Rogers will join us briefly. So the, we have two remaining topics on our work session agenda today and they both relate to our work around transportation. The first is on the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, also referred to as MSTIP or MISTIP for the five-year period from 2023 through 2028. So this is a multi-step process and so our staff is here with us with an update for the latest phase. So please take it away, Mr. Roberts, our Director of Land Use and Transportation.
Sorry, the screen, the screen moved. So good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for having us back again. I've got a team of folks here that are going to walk us through a presentation. And this is really an update today primarily, but we want to just keep you posted on a regular basis as we move through this process. So Erin Wardell, our Principal Transportation Planner, and John L. Bell from Espousal Strategies is back with us again. Thank you, John L. And he'll be talking to us a bit about what we've, he and Erin will tell us a little bit about what we've learned about from our community engagement work so far. And then we'll give you a preview of some of the next steps that are coming up in the process. And then happy, of course, to take questions and facilitate some discussion at the end. So go ahead, Erin.
Thank you, Stephen. My name is Erin Wardell. I'm the Principal Transportation Planner. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and members of the Board of Commissioners. Next slide, please. So the purpose of our briefing today is to give you a general update on our process to develop evaluation metrics to use for the MISTIP funding allocation. We'll be sharing some of the high-level comments that we've heard through our ongoing community engagement. We're not done yet with our community engagement. We'll be sharing with you what we've heard to date. We'll be sharing the draft evaluation metrics in advance of the county coordinating committee's meeting on Monday, where they will be asked to make a recommendation to you. The county coordinating committee's transportation advisory committee did make a recommendation at their meeting last week, and I'll give you an update on that conversation as well. And then we'll talk about our next steps to finalize the evaluation metrics and then move forward with the project solicitation. Next slide. So the policy questions that we will circle back to at the end of the presentation are, does your board support the direction of the MISTIP 2328 project evaluation metrics development process? And does your board have suggestions for any additional metrics that we should consider using or for the project proposal packet? Next slide. So you've seen this slide before. We were before you in January talking about what's different about the 2328 funding allocation process. And in the beginning, there are these two changes that we've made toward how we're developing the evaluation metrics in advance of asking for projects to be submitted. So the first of those is that we convened a technical work group to help expand our areas of expertise and how we can evaluate transportation projects. And we wanted to do that intentionally to make sure that we were keeping up with the state of the practice for evaluating transportation projects, but also to expand our expertise to include partners like Clean Water Services and our public health partners, as well as our consultant team through Espousal, bringing the great work they've done around equity and engagement. So this is really an opportunity for us to do a check-in and how we evaluate transportation projects. The second change for this year was a first engagement phase around what is most important to the community in our transportation system, so that that first phase of engagement could inform the development of these project evaluation metrics. Next slide. Also, as a reminder, back in September, the board approved the MISTIP work program, which included these desired outcomes for the overall project, the overall program allocation. And those outcomes are equity, safety, economic vitality, livability, and natural environment. So we considered these to really be our marching orders as we move forward and develop the project evaluation metrics, so that we can relate it all back to these desired outcomes in the end. Next slide. So I'm going to turn it over to John L. now to give us an update on the community engagement that we've conducted.
Great. Thank you, Erin and Chair Harrington, members of the board. Great to be with you again. As Erin indicated, one of the great bright spots of this process has been how we have been able to really engage the community, particularly communities of color in deeper ways relative to transportation, as well as with the HB 2001 effort. We started off with online open house back in mid-January through mid-February. We had a number of listening sessions recruited through our culturally-specific community-based organizations. Those occurred on January 25th and January 26th. Huge shout-out to Central Cultural, who really helped us do that work. We also had focus groups that were recruited through B&amp;A Star, as well as MET, which occurred on February 12th, as well as 16th. And we're also in the midst of a number of stakeholder interviews. This will be ongoing and is still open for organizations, as well as stakeholders, who would like to request those interviews. Next slide, please. In terms of some of what we heard, that bicycle and pedestrian safety is a priority, specifically sidewalk and bike lane gaps, as well as better street lighting, not new, of course, to this board, but was something that continued to be reinforced in our engagement. We heard a number of concerns relative to high-growth areas causing more traffic and delay. That community members named specific roadways, all of which were previously identified as needing improvement. The other thing is that more transit service and better access to transit is critically important. So those are some of the buckets of areas that we continue to hear. Next slide. And Erin, I'm turning it back to you.
So taking in this really rich feedback that we heard from the community, our next phase of work was to stitch together those guiding outcomes that we started with, what we heard from the community, and then our technical exercise about what are the various ways that we can evaluate transportation projects. So we pulled together those three elements in order to develop our draft evaluation metrics. And this slide shows at a high level where we were at when we started to, when we put together the packet for this board meeting. We have made a couple of minor amendments to this in advance of the WCCC on Monday, but we're still basically in the same place with these evaluation metrics. So considering how a project reduces barriers and disparities faced by our historically-excluded communities, how a project improves access to the places that people need to go. So places like jobs, where schools are, essential community services, hospitals, and really looking at this again through that lens of our historically-excluded communities and where they need to go. We're looking at how projects can increase equitable opportunities for walking and bicycling, how projects increase equitable access to transit, how projects can increase vehicle travel time reliability, because we know people still need to travel by vehicles to get to where they need to go and when they need to be there. Projects that improve safety for all travelers, regardless of the mode they're taking. We want to improve their safety. Projects that enhance the built or natural environment or improve climate resiliency. And then projects that bring additional funding to Washington County, because with public funds, we want to be as responsible as possible and make sure that we're able to build as many projects as possible. And so considering projects that can leverage other funding sources is important in this cycle of MISTIP as well. And so this is where we started. For each of these metrics, we have also come up with a specific measure, so a way that we will be measuring how projects perform against these metrics. Next slide. So our next step in bringing forward these evaluation metrics for you and your April meeting are to present them to the Washington County Coordinating Committee this coming Monday for their recommendation. As I said at the beginning, the Transportation Advisory Committee did review these on Thursday, and they did make a recommendation for the county coordinating committee to approve the evaluation metrics. As I said, we've made a couple of minor tweaks in the language in advance of the county coordinating committee. Specifically, one of the things that the TAC was, I'm not going to say concerned about, but one of the things that was discussed there is that the hard thing with transportation is that it's not just one individual place. It's about moving in between places and how you move in between places. And so there was concern about, specifically with equity measures, only measuring in one place and not considering how we can actually benefit users moving in between places. And so we made some adjustments to the language to talk about how it's possible for a project or how a project is serving an equity need, not necessarily just based on the geographic location of that project. Although, as we've shared previously, we have developed an equity index tool that will be really valuable in evaluating these projects. And so I think what's interesting about how we developed that equity tool with John L.'s team is that it takes more than just the demographics and specifically the home-based demographics into account. We're looking at our equity index in three ways. Who lives there in terms of demographics? Also, what neighborhood characteristics? So why do people need to go there? And so looking at things like low-wage jobs, hospitals, large grocery stores, Title I elementary schools. And then the third component of it is transportation gaps. So where are there areas that have the most needs in the transportation system? So I think it's actually a pretty holistic way to look at the equity index and it'll be really informative as we go forward. So with that, the TAC recommended approval to the WCCC. And when we come back to you in April, we'll be able to give you a summary of their discussion on Monday. So that's happening on Monday, March 14th, and then we'll be back before you on April 5th. And at that time, we'll share what we heard from WCCC and ask you to direct us to release the call for projects the next day. Next slide. So the proposal packet for projects, we have prepared a project application form that cities or the county will fill out as a part of submitting projects to be considered for MISTIP. And we created this form to be a little bit more intentional and gather a little bit more information upfront about projects to really help inform us in terms of project costs, project risk, and project readiness, so that your board knows what you're getting into when you approve the entire package of projects that we'll be funding. Some of those pieces of information we'd like to collect is the community support or opposition to a specific project, the cost estimate, as much information as is known at this time, the score on our equity index, and then narrative project information, which is an opportunity to justify why a project is really needed and why it fits into the MISTIP project program outcomes. Next slide. And here's our timeline. So on April 5th, we'll be back to confirm the evaluation metrics and ask to release the project proposal packet, which is our milestone two in our overall project schedule. April 6th to May 3rd will be the call for projects time period. And then in July, we will come back with the prioritized project list and ask for your direction to begin engagement around the projects. John L.'s team is still helping us with ongoing engagement. We're not done. And so we're continuing stakeholder briefings. We're scheduling at least one additional focus group for later this month. We're also going to be scheduling CBO workshop to help us do the prioritization of the projects and help us review the screening criteria. So we're pretty excited about those upcoming events happening later this spring as well. Next slide. And here is our overall project timeline. So you can see that we are here in March of '22, moving towards that milestone two, and then still aiming for wrapping this all up in December. Next slide, and I think we're on our questions. Here we are, back at the policy questions again. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, who would like to go first? Commissioner Rogers, thank you.
Erin, for my edification, we've always said that improvements were for a county-wide system. And when you're talking about street lights, you're talking about sidewalks. Be very clear with me, are those on the roads of county significance?
They are, yes. So our project proposal packet, the first three questions are the eligibility criteria for the MISTIP program. And one of those is, is this project on a roadway of county-wide significance identified on the map? And so that will be one of the first questions they have to answer when preparing projects.
So that, there's no change. And I mean, that's always been the way it was, and we put sidewalks on everything anyway.
Yes.
My second question, probably more appropriate for Stephen, and that is that, as you know, I'm very hawkish on doing some sort of bonding of these projects. I think that would be a huge mistake and not, not to do something in that regard. And from what I understand, that's not, at this point, necessarily a consideration. So if I've misunderstood that, inform me, but tell me where we are on, whatever your list are, is bonding that and getting it done before prices go too high.
Yeah, that, that's a complex process. So we've committed that we'll be back to your board here in the next, hopefully, few weeks with some additional information on evaluation of that question. I think, you know, we find ourselves honestly challenged in terms of capacity, just in terms of delivering the projects that are already in the queue. So as you know, if you bond, you've got commitments to spend the money within a certain amount of time. And I think there are just some real, very real constraints in all aspects of the project delivery pipeline right now that would make that a challenging endeavor. But I think that's, that's one consideration. There, there are others, too. So it's, it, there are a lot of moving parts that we're working on analyzing and hope to have some information back to you here before too long.
Just one quick follow-up in regards to that. Are you talking with bond council to see what incremental amounts would do in terms of projects? For instance, if you took $10 million a year, over 20 years, that's $200 million. What would that in fair market value and as well as discounted value today bias? So are you, are you looking at that? Are you working with somebody on that?
Yep, those are some of the considerations, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, if I could just add, our interim CFO is also involved in this process. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Any other Commissioners have any comments, questions, feedback? Go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I wasn't sure if you saw my hand raised, but maybe hiding him. But thank you, Stephen and Erin, for this presentation. I vote. I think maybe this might be in hindsight, but our desired outcomes doesn't really list out or explicitly call out this approach to multimodal desire. But from the community engagement, in terms of what you've heard, people are really looking that multimodal approach and bubbling that out. So how do you, how do you intend to balance that? Making sure, you know, we have a multimodal approach to our next phase of MISTIP projects. And then after that, I have a question.
Sure. Well, you know, as a longstanding practice, all of our projects are typically multimodal. So we may be making both vehicle safety and capacity and/or capacity improvements, but we're always also improving the pedestrian and bicycle system as a component of those projects. So by nature, really, just about everything that we do is, is multimodal in its nature. So and then, you know, and in terms of the eligibility criteria, that that's also baked in to that the project benefits multiple modes.
So would the project call out then that whatever, like, would it call out this, that this, the approach is multimodal? Because I think from my last town hall, people are feeling like, you know, there's no, this multimodal lens being applied to. Because I think there is, I could guarantee you, like, I live at 198th and I see it, some of the benefits of MISTIPs. But because it's missing in some of the narrative and the literature that we publish, people aren't realizing that whatever we're doing, we're having that lens applied to. So I don't know if you're going to call out in the project application process that, you know, whatever you're, like, letting people know that the request is multimodal, because it could, I could look at the, the desired outcomes and see that, oh, okay, this is the areas of focus. And then the other question I had, I think this is a dialogue that the three of us, you, Kristen, Erin, myself, and Brenda, five of us, have been on. Is this access to transit and realizing the styfu that happened with 198th? What is the plan to stop something like that doesn't happen to the next project? And I'm referring to, you know, I was interested seeing, see if Trimate could provide some bus benches or shelters and realizing that, that we don't actually meet the criteria of, to be able to have any shelters. They might possibly, we're still investigating probably for benches, but that street, 198th, being a brand-new street, doesn't actually meet the criteria for Trimate to put bus shelters for folks. So I'm wondering, you know, more transit service and better access to transit, like, how do we even mitigate something like that happening for, in the future? Realizing that we can't do anything about 198th and not sure it's worth going back and redesigning that street to just have, you know. Maybe it is, but I'm not sure. So I'm interested in learning more about and, and having a sort of understanding of the, the project checklist of when we do big projects like that. Is, are you planning on publishing some kind of a project checklist so that we know what we're check-marking and what we're going to accomplish?
I'll, I'll take the last one of those first. I think the idea of, you know, when, when you say a checklist, I think we do try to provide a pretty good description of the project, so that when you act on it, you've got a fairly clear understanding of at least the big, the bigger aspects of the project, what it would entail. And I think that's definitely a point that we can take into consideration as we're continuing to develop, you know, as we go through the rest of the allocation process with you. And I think to your comment about the criteria for the transit amenities, I think there are two, two elements that are in play. One is Trimate has its own criteria for how many boardings and ridership, you know, warrants installing and maintaining those kinds of amenities. And my understanding from Trimate is that 198th did not meet those criteria at this time. And then I think there's a secondary element of the design, so ensuring that maybe we've got wide enough sidewalks at transit stops that maybe if a project doesn't necessarily meet the criteria today, we could facilitate installation of benches at some point in the future when it does meet those criteria. So I think those are both, both really good comments. We've been in discussions with Trimate, you know, regarding their criteria. But they've always been an important part of our design development process. So on 198th in particular, you know, we, we have a one, a Trimate staff person that works with us through the, through the design process and helps ensure that we're incorporating their requirements and recommendations.
Thank you, Stephen. I think 198th, I think there might have been a portions of it that could have qualified for shelter and perhaps benches, too. So I don't know. But yeah, I'm, I'm excited. I'm happy with what you said.
Yeah.
And look forward to this.
Yeah, and I appreciate your point, Commissioner. I mean, the, the idea of sort of future-proofing a project, if you will, so that even if it doesn't maybe meet the criteria now, but has the opportunity to in the future, how do we just help ensure that we put the infrastructure in place to facilitate those amenities in the future? So thank you.
And just to circle back to, I think, your first question on the multimodal needs is that the, when you look at the project proposal packet, which is in the WCCC packet, the draft project proposal packets in the WCCC packet for Monday, the three basic eligibility criteria to go forward as a MISTIP project, the first is, does this project meet multimodal needs? So as a part of filling out that project proposal, the cities and county staff will be thinking about that upfront.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Just a second, I got a little, there you go. Yeah, well, thank you for this again. So John L., I'd like to kind of get a sense of how many people attended these focus groups? I mean, so how broad is the, I guess, the evaluation and the analysis that came out of your, your focus groups?
That's a great question, Commissioner Willie, and I'll ask Erin to remind me. But for our focus groups, we have both focus groups as well as listening sessions. And I think total, we had over, oh, I don't know, 80, 80 folks, I think, total. Erin, could you remind me of that?
I think so. I think that sounds about right. I think it was 41 participants at our listening sessions and then a dozen or so at the two focus groups that have taken place. We have a third focus group coming up later this month as well. And then we had over 250 responses to the online open house and a couple of individual stakeholder briefings. So I think we've had pretty good participation in the project through those various efforts.
And one additional note to that, Commissioner Willie, is for both the focus groups as well as the listening sessions, what we found was, for many of the participants, this was the first time that they've engaged in any level of government sort of process, in particular, transportation and infrastructure. Again, those were designed to really engage historically marginalized communities.
And I can add a little bit to that as well. The, of the two listening sessions, the first was conducted in Spanish, and so reaching out to our Spanish-language community through that. And then for the, the focus groups, the first was recruited through B&amp;A Star for people living within regulated affordable housing. And then the second was recruited through the Muslim Educational Trust. Our third focus group will be recruited through Central Cultural. So there are really opportunities to reach out specifically to historically-excluded communities and have a, a much richer, deeper conversation with them through that format.
And is that where, you know, you said you had 250 online, which I think is great. Was that, was, was that, I guess, the same folks that you'd reached out with, B&amp;A Star and all of that? So it's the same kind of demographic there?
Um, no. Our online open house participants generally are more people who are typically engaged in government process, like I'd say it that way. So we generally have a higher percentage of white and higher-income people participating through any of our online tools. And I think everybody finds that across the board when they're doing engagement. And so that's why we put the effort into doing the more targeted engagement. We also, through the targeted engagement, have tried to promote the online tool when it was active. And so if people came to the focus group and came to listening sessions, we shared the link for the online open house and asked them to share it through their networks. So we may have pulled in some additional participants through that as well.
Okay. Well, that's great. It sounds like you're really trying to, I guess, spread the word a little bit and reach certainly those marginalized communities. And yeah, John, now that, this is the first time for a lot of people in this regards, because really, this has been a fairly internal technical advisory group. The TAC has done most of the legwork on this. So this is kind of a first for a lot of people out there. And, and I'm glad that we're kind of spreading that opportunity, because it'll be interesting to hear. When I look at, when I look at slide number eight, which has the current, current draft evaluation metrics on it, those are all, I like those, those are all good things, but I'm just, again, my number-one priority is that MSTIP starts with major streets. And so, again, I don't want us to lose that focus. I don't see a lot of focus in the evaluation metrics, including major streets. And it's like, as has been pointed out, whenever we do major streets or otherwise improvements, we always add sidewalks and we always add lighting and bike paths, and so it's kind of a package deal. But yeah, I just don't want to, again, lose that focus that this is major street money.
Right. We certainly hear that. And the reason that's not included in the evaluation criteria is because it's an eligibility criteria. So theoretically, a project won't be in there to evaluate, because it's not even eligible for the program. So we should be catching those upfront in the application process.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Commissioner Treese, any?
Commissioner Tree, sunny? No questions or comments, Commissioner Tree?
No, thank you. I, I, you know, just working through this process as we go step by step here. So, uh, thank you for the presentation.
Okay, Commissioner Rogers, back to you.
Thank you. Uh, two additional questions. Uh, one, one of the equity issues we've always had in the past is equity between districts. Uh, is there any, uh, any change in that that, I mean, you're never gonna be perfect and there's gonna be projects that need to be done, but is there any change from that standard that's been historical?
So I can answer that one first. So that's been our operating assumption because that's been the board direction in the past. And so in terms of how we've been framing the funding allocation, at least to our city partners, has been that assume the money will be split evenly between the four districts, assume about thirty-five million dollars per district. And so we, we have been using that to frame the conversations that we're having around the program.
Erin, I don't, I don't want to give her anything up, but I, I've always said that if something is needed, it doesn't have to be perfectly matched. And then we can, we can float money around, but that's just my opinion. Uh, my second one is, is, uh, is, is, I know Erin, you and Chris and Stephen know this. I've always been a huge multimodal guy, but I'm wondering as we incorporate that more specifically, how does that work for or against rural projects? So how will they be rated? Or how about other projects which don't have active tran- may not have transit down their, their street, or they certainly don't have, many of them, and I have them in my district, a lot of them, active transportation facilities, so they don't have those things. So how will those score in terms of being able to compete for funds if, one, they don't have transit, they don't have active transportation, or they're in a rural area, but they're probably never going to have this? How, how will those rank with this multimodal criteria?
So I think that the, the question about rural projects is really important. The county is the rural transportation provider, and so those would be projects that would be put forward by the county. It's still possible for a rural project to serve these outcomes that we're trying to accomplish with the overall program. So if we pivot back to those outcomes that the board wants to see from the program, I think that the rural projects can still, some rural projects could still perform really well. And so as a part of doing this evaluation process, we'll be very open about that and share the information with the board and let you know, you know, what we know about the projects and how we think they score against those outcomes, regardless of whether they're rural or urban. You're correct that rural projects aren't built to urban standards, so we wouldn't expect to have a rural project built with full sidewalks and street lighting. We just, we can't do that in the rural area. That doesn't mean there's not a need for those projects. And so we've tried to structure the program in a way that would allow for those projects to still emerge if they're identified as being a high need. Certainly those projects would still perform well, I think, against some of our equity screening, because we know that we have high equity needs in our rural area as well as our urban area.
Could you, could you also address, I think, I know Pam has some of it, could you also address those facilities that don't have active transportation and don't have transit that aren't in rural areas, you've done the rural areas, but I'm talking about urban areas where heavily trafficked and they won't meet either one of those criteria just because of how they're originally designed. So are they going to be rated differently or lower because they don't have those facilities to start with?
No, they wouldn't be scored lower because they don't have them. I mean, the, the reason that the projects would be on the list is because they have a need, right? They're not built up to urban standard. And urban standard does include sidewalks and bike lanes and accommodations for multimodals. So, you know, when we talk about, we build complete streets. When we're in the urban area, we build the sidewalks, we build the bike lanes. Um, and as we talked about with one ninety eighth, we have the conversations with our Trimate partners as we're building them for how we can accommodate future transit users. So, uh, they wouldn't be dinged in any way in the scoring process for that.
Commissioner Tree, go ahead.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rogers, perhaps we, instead of using the term equity among districts, maybe, maybe a better term would be parity. Is that, is that fair? I mean, isn't that what you're looking for is the balance of spending?
You're on mute, sir.
Sorry, my mouse wouldn't cooperate. I was slapping it around pretty good. That's a great question. I only share my prejudice and it may not be yours. And that is that it doesn't have to be parity, exact parity. For instance, if District Two had a project of countywide significance that really needed to be fixed, then it probably would be rating higher than, than maybe one and four and three. So I, there has to be just some, some, uh, look at, you know, equity amongst the districts, but it doesn't have to be exactly parity. And I know a lot of the cities in my area would like parity, because they said, well, we get a quarter. And I said, you may not. Maybe you get, uh, you know, fifteen percent or ten percent if there's worthy projects. Does, does, does that make sense? I'm not asking for exact equalization.
It, it, it does. I was just thinking of a term that didn't, uh, make us work, you know, where we've used the equity term for different issues. I was looking for working toward parity. I agree, I agreed that we're never gonna, you know, there'll be years when things are balanced differently. I was just looking to make sure that we weren't confusing our, ourselves and our audience around some of these issues.
So commissioners, any other questions or comments before I go and?
So Chair, I was just gonna maybe make one final comment, sort of on the distribution question that Commissioner Rogers brought up. We, you know, we don't have it in our presentation today, but you've all seen the map of the past projects that have been built over this past thirty-five years now. And I think, you know, you can look at that and see that there's been a good distribution of the projects around and the funding as well. And so I think, you know, the system works and, and to Commissioner Rogers' point, it isn't, there's not an equal distribution in every district every time, but over time, you know, that is, it has been a sort of overarching North Star, if you will, you know, just trying to help ensure that because it does a pro- a countywide property tax, that we're distributing those benefits of the program countywide.
Thank you, Stephen. I'll go. Uh, so with regard to your first question, I just want to check a couple of things. On slide number eight, seven and eight, where you talk about input. On seven, you talk about more transit service and better access to transit. And I realized, uh, that in reading another staff briefing memo on a different topic, that I want to make sure I understand in clear and simple terms and that our community members or that I and our community members have the benefit of similar definitions. So I'm wondering, for more transit service, is that both the transit network and the frequency of service on those lines? Whereas is better access to transit just access, the ability to get to and from those stops? But not about frequency?
Correct.
Oh, great. I got it. I got it right then. Okay. So, um, I just need to confirm a couple of other things, that the primary difference between the draft criteria from the community input and the TAC was, you talked about one change from the TAC involving between places, which you think will come out or relate to, if I understood your explanation, Erin, and I may not have developed, relates to the Equity Index Tool, where you talked about who lives in an area and then the neighborhood characteristics of why people have to get to the area and when they get there, where do they go there? As well as the third aspect is the transportation gaps. Am I understanding?
I can explain a little bit more specifically. So the TAC conversation, they had the benefit of reviewing the metrics and then also how we intended to measure the metric. And so the met- the metric is reduces barriers and disparities faced by historically excluded communities. And our draft measure was the project is in an area with a medium, high, or high priority score on the Equity Index. Based on the TAC's conversation, we edited that so that the measure is project will demonstrably improve roadway, bikeway, sidewalk, or other travel conditions for an area of high need, as identified with the medium, high, or high score on the Equity Index. So just being a little bit more intentional, that it's not just about being in the area with a particular score, it's about that it's demonstrably improving the travel options for people.
Okay, I get that. But I want to make sure, and I'll use Mr. Bell as a means to make sure we're not undermining the input from community. So are we, has the review and discussion from the TAC helped refine that evaluation criteria? Sufficiently, Mr. Bell, or have we undermined the very feedback that we've gotten?
Chair, Chair Harrington, I think that's a terrific question. I, I, I don't think it undermines it. But one of the, um, stop, got, stopgap measures, I think, in this process is our ongoing dialogue with the community relative to the criteria. I think it's a recognition that all communities, particularly, um, historically marginalized communities, they're traveling a fair amount. And so to the degree that there is a cumulative benefit leading to sort of equitable outcomes, I think what TAC is recommending there is consistent with that overall thing that we've heard from the community.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, um, so I think I'm fine moving forward. You asked two questions. So relative to your second question, I reviewed the project proposal form. And so I just have a few comments to share on that, if now's the appropriate time. Okay. Well, first I want to say is I have to admit, I'm a little evaluation matrixed out from my years as a metro counselor. Sorry. I maybe spent a little bit too much time understanding how we were going to evaluate things in order to understand how we were going to reach those desired outcomes. But I am certainly passionate about this process being different than before. But I rest assured that it is simply because we are going through this process of community input, including from our historically not engaged community members to develop these evaluation criteria for the first time. That's great. But there are a couple of things that I'm sensitive to. And I, it may just be a misunderstanding on my part. So, uh, towards the bottom of the first page of the project proposal form, the second to the last question, would misstep funding for this project leverage other funding sources? Describe the source and process of obtaining blah, blah, blah. Well, I'm concerned about this question being used as an evaluation of the need versus about how the need is addressed. So, um, because there isn't anything about our desired outcomes that necessitate asking that question. And maybe it's just an observation on my part related, uh, to this. But the fact that it doesn't relate to the desired outcomes for twenty-three, twenty-five, five, leaves me skeptical that have we really stepped back and looked at this with a clean sheet of paper, or are we just perpetuating some older methods? I don't know. I just thought I'd ask. And I don't need an answer right now, certainly. I just wanted to raise the question about how that is helping us evaluate the need for the project. Though I certainly understand that no matter what, we're gonna get a long list of needs, right? On the second page, there's a section, describe any existing constraints that limit the project design. And then you go on to talk about impact to existing residents or community resources such as community centers, social service providers, faith-based, da, da, da. And what concerns me is the use of the word impact to as though all of those things are detrimental. Because through your, if I understand it correctly, through the Equity Index Tool, the neighborhood characteristics, well, a community or neighborhood that has a community center, social service providers, face, faith-based destinations, parks and gathering places, while also having gaps, in my logic, would help address those areas first, as opposed to a gap where none of those things exist. But maybe I misunderstood. And then, um, the second to the last one from the bottom is the project intended to mitigate an identified congestion or bottleneck issue. And once again, here I asked myself, how is this a desired outcome? Is it that we have improved connectivity? Now that I could relate to. Or is it about reliability? Right? So I'm just trying to better understand how some of these, if I call them criteria in the project application form, are brought to life and help us reach desired outcomes. That's all. So just take it as food for thought.
Well, thank you for that. We, we did have an internal conversation yesterday about the need to link these to, directly to the measures and then directly to the outcomes. And so I know you said you've seen a lot of matrices. We have another one that has all of that information on it. But we'll be prepared to share that going forward.
My brain just exploded.
Careful what you ask for.
I'm on board this journey. Don't get me wrong. I am clearly on this journey. I'm not derailed yet.
Yeah, I, and I wanted to, I wanted to thank you, Chair. I think, I think that's a really great point. And I think when we talk about impact, we're, we're assuming that an impact, it's a, it's a neutral thing. You can have a positive impact or a negative impact, but that's, that's a good point, that it can be taken in a way that might imply negativity. So that's, that's definitely a, a good catch and we'll, we'll take a look at that. So yeah, we really appreciate the input. Uh, this is very helpful for us too.
So Board, are we all set to move forward? Yee-haw. Thank you. Good job, team.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Good to see you again, John L. Thanks for helping us operationalize equity. Okay, we have another transportation topic. Bicycle facility selection for Springville Road Phase Four Improvement Project. And the general project area extends from the PCC Rock Creek entrance over to Josh Avenue to the east. Take it away, Mr. Roberts.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a couple of introductions. I have some other team members that are joining us. Joe Yonkins is our Capital Projects Division Manager. And Marla Vic is a principal project plant, uh, principal project manager in Joe's work group. And then Andy Morris is with us. Andy is the actual project manager for the Springville Improvement Project. So they're all here to help, uh, go through the presentation and, uh, answer questions as we get there. So I'll probably do most of the presenting and, uh, you know, Joe or Marla, uh, Andy, feel free to jump in if you see that I've missed anything and want to come back to it. Um, and we do have quite a few slides to get through. Some of them will just be clicking through fairly quickly, but I just want to, you know, hopefully you've seen the packet. But didn't want to surprise anyone. So with that, I think we'll get started. So the, uh, reason that we're here is that the board adopted a resolution So the reason that we're here is that the board adopted a resolution in 2017 where you have requested that we bring capital projects that are funded by the county to you before we hit the thirty percent design stage. And that's a check-in point for us to talk about bicycle facility selection for a particular project. And so that's where we are right now. This project is not an MSTIP project. It's actually funded through the North Bethany County Service District for Roads pursuant to the North Bethany Funding Strategy that was adopted by the board in conjunction with the Development Service or with the Community Plan for North Bethany back in about 2011. Next slide, please. So again, the purpose today, reviewing the bike facility alternatives and then seeking your direction or feedback on that. Next slide, please. So we'll walk through some background about the project location and some of the planning context info. Look at current conditions on this project site. Look at bicycle facility alternatives. We have two that we'll share with you today. We'll review public input that we've received to date on this project. And then asked to consider the different bicycle facility alternatives and our recommendation. And then seek your direction on the facilities, bike facility selection. Next slide. So these questions we'll come back to at the end. So again, does the board concur with the recommendation? And is there any additional information that may be needed or helpful to help further this discussion? Next slide. So we'll jump into the context. Next slide, please. So for orientation, the project is at the south edge of the North Bethany area. And again, runs along the south edge of the PCC Rock Creek Campus. This is between one hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue on the west, Kaiser Road on the east. And it is called Springville Phase Four because we've had three previous improvement projects that have been completed along Springville. Phases one and two were between one hundred and eighty-fifth and the PCC Campus Entrance. And the road there was widened from two lanes actually to five lanes. And we installed a traffic signal at the PCC Entrance and at one hundred and seventy-eighth Avenue, realigned it, actually realigned the PCC Campus Entrance as a part of that Phase Two project. And then Phase Three was an improvement to bring Springville up to three lanes with consistent bike lanes and sidewalks. On, and that goes between Joss Avenue and Kaiser. So again, this phase four is just this last segment in between those previously completed projects. Next slide, please. So land use predominantly single-family residential. That's the yellow color there that you see. There is the PCC Rock Creek Campus, which is on my screen anyway, looks to be a kind of greenish aqua color. And then there's the Bethany Presbyterian Church located at the corner of Springville and Kaiser Road to the east. Next slide, please. The Transportation System Plan has two different types of bicycle facilities identified. Oh, sorry, this is actually the functional classification. Slide ahead. So Springville Road at this location is designated as an arterial in our functional classification system in the Transportation System Plan. That's the highest level of roadway other than, say, a freeway type road. So those are, tend to be the primary backbone roads that serve areas, large areas. Next slide, please. Oh, and I, I should note too that this segment is designated as a three-lane facility in the Transportation System Plan. I mentioned five lanes earlier to the west, but the, from the PCC Entrance continuing east over to Kaiser, it is designated three lanes. The Transportation System Plan also has bikeway designations. There are two. One is a major street bikeway. And in those cases, the definition is that typically a six-foot on-street bike lane or buffered bike lane is considered generally to be a sufficient bike facility for cyclist accommodation. And the other is a major street or enhanced major street bikeway. And typically that would be where you would be looking at a minimum of a buffered bike lane or some other type of physical separation or barrier between vehicular traffic and bicycle traffic. In this case, it is a major street bikeway, so the lower of those two classifications. Next slide, please. So when we do these projects, we do try to project forward traffic volumes. And so currently, the average annual daily trips on this segment of road is a little over seven thousand. About six and a half percent of that is truck traffic. And this is a transit route. There's bus service every thirty minutes currently. In the future, we're projecting growth to around ten thousand trips a day by 2035. A consistent level of truck traffic over time. And the bus service, of course, is subject to change according to TRIMET's future, future decisions. Next slide. So now we'll take a look at current conditions. Next slide. We've sort of broken the project up into different segments, and that's really just for purposes of trying to describe the sort of the current condition of the roadway. So at the east, we're starting at the east end of the project. So the PCC Entrance is at the far left side of the slide there where it says Springville Phase Two. And in this location, it is a fairly narrow two-lane road with no shoulders. And there are sidewalks on both sides that have been installed with previous development activities. But because the road has not been improved, the sidewalks tend to be relatively far off. And you can see that in the cross-section drawing up above. Next slide, please. So Segment One continues onto this slide. And unfortunately, we're having to break this up into two slides because it's a lengthy project to try to fit it on the slide. So the Segment One, what we call Segment One, continues all the way to the east line of the PCC Campus, which, as you can see, there's a ball field on the left side of your slide there. That's sort of that east edge of the PCC Campus. There's also a fairly large recreation facility that's managed by THPRD on the, on the PCC property. We then transition into Segment Two, and Segment Two is the most constrained part of the project. We have a couple of existing properties on the north side and the south side where the amount of right-of-way is quite limited there. And there's a relatively sharp curve in the roadway. And there's also a significant amount of elevation change that occurs there. That's a low point in the road. So it, it or at, we're, we're near a low point in the road there. So there is some great change happening in that curve as well. Segment, oh, and I, I should say, in, in Segment Two, on the north side of the roadway, we did complete about three or four years ago, a temporary sidewalk connection that was installed on the north side of the roadway, just to give people a safe place to walk between the neighborhoods to the east and the, and the PCC and THPRD facilities to the west. We were starting to see people walking on the, on the roadway, which actually had no shoulders at all. So it was a pretty unsafe situation there. Segment Three is a culvert crossing. And so we are also going to be, as we get into the design there, you'll see that we're trying to minimize the roadway footprint as we go across the culvert to minimize the environmental impacts of the project through there. And then Segment Four is an area that has been developed on both sides of the roadway. So it does have sidewalks on both sides. And on the north side, the, what we would call the half-street improvements have been completed. So it has the sidewalk, the curb and gutter, and bike lane facilities are in place. On the south side, it does have some interim improvements that would, that would be improved with this project. And then that really is the end of the project at Joss Avenue and one hundred and sixty-fifth Terrace there. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, to the east would be the Springville Phase Three improvements that recently were completed. Next slide. So these are some photos. Again, we'll be kind of marching along from west to east, the same way we just walked through those different segments here. So this is actually looking at the recently completed improvements in Phase Two. And in the distance there, you see the traffic signal. That is the PCC Entrance. So we're, at this point, we're west of the, of the PCC Campus Entrance. And we do have a multi-use path, ten feet wide on the north side, that was constructed in partnership with PCC when we completed that project. And that was intended to try to help facilitate pedestrian and, and bike traffic, perhaps that folks that may not want to ride on the roadway, getting from one eighty-fifth over to the PCC Campus Entrance and the rec facility there. On the south side, we tend to have five-foot separated sidewalks. And there is an on-street buffered bike lane on that, on the south, on both sides here, actually. Next slide, please. So at this location, we're now east of the PCC Entrance, looking east again. And so you can see where the roadway starts to taper down from the five lanes down to a two-lane section off in the distance there. And again, multi-use path on the north side at this location, still along the PCC frontage and a combination of five and six-foot sidewalk on the south side and buffered bike lanes on both sides here. Next slide. So we're now into Segment Two. That was the pinch point that I mentioned earlier at the curve in the roadway. And so again, narrow roadway, no shoulders at this location. It's a little bit hard to see, but on the left side of the image, on the left side of the roadway, you can see that sidewalk that was built a few years ago there as that interim pedestrian connection to get, get folks more safely through this stretch of the corridor. Next slide. And this is in Segment Three. So the culvert, where you see that guardrail on the left side and on the right side actually is the location of the culvert. So there is a small creek that's running under the roadway at this location. And you can see on the left side, that's where the, what we would call the half-street again, was constructed with the Arbor Oaks Development on the north side of the roadway. And there is a bike lane facility just in this stretch here. On the south side, you still have interim facilities. But there is a sidewalk adjacent to the existing subdivision there. And no bike facility on the south side at this time. Next slide. And this is in the zone just to the west of Joss Avenue. So the intersection with Joss is sort of at the top of the hill that you see in this photo. So again, you see on the left side, existing improvements that were completed with the Arbor Oaks Development. And on the right side, you see no bike lane at this present time, but a sidewalk that was built with an adjacent development there. Next slide. And this is the final image. Looking now, we're, we're now east of the Joss intersection. And we're looking east, further east yet toward Kaiser Road. And this again is the recently completed Phase Three segment. So you see here a three-lane roadway with buffered bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides. Next slide. Uh, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but we, we do try to map out as we're thinking about these types of facilities. Some of the things that we look at in terms of suitability for different kinds of bike facilities would be the number of potential conflict points that we have that, that may slow down or impede bike traffic. And so things like driveways, we do have bus stops in this location. We do have a signalized intersection, of course, at the PCC Campus Entrance, and then a couple of side streets. And this is again, the, the western half of the project. Next slide. And on the east half of the project, again, we have several driveways, one side street. And then there will actually be a signal installed as a part of this project at the Joss Springville Intersection. And so that will become a signalized intersection with this project. And again, transit stops through, through this zone as well. Next slide. So now we're going to take a look at two different alternatives that we shared with you. Next slide. So we're calling this Alternative One, and this has on-street buffered bike lanes. And we have, again, because we've got different contexts that we're sort of trying to address, we have taken cross-sections at various places along the roadway based on those four segments we've been talking about. So Segment One, again, here being adjacent to PCC, we would have the ten-foot existing path there on the north side. And with this proposal, the three lanes at this location, the buffered bike lanes on-street, and then a six-foot sidewalk on the south side of the roadway. And then at the bottom of this slide is Segment Two. So again, that's the pinch point where we get a little bit tight in the curve there. And so we're proposing on the north side, we'll need a fairly significant retaining wall there to widen the roadway out in order to facilitate the, the road itself and then the pedestrian facility. And because of the wall there, we are proposing an eight-foot wide sidewalk, just to create something that would be a more, hopefully more comfortable pedestrian environment than just being squeezed right between a big wall and, and the road, the bike lane. Uh, on the south side here, you'll see that we're proposing a six-foot sidewalk. And again, to try to minimize the footprint in both cases here, we do have sidewalks that are up adjacent to the bike lane here, curb-tight sidewalks. Next slide. So Segment Three at the culvert crossing, again, trying to minimize the roadway footprint. At this location, there are no driveways or side streets in this area, so we can reduce the roadway down to two lanes. So we're doing that is our proposal here. Again, the on-street buffered bike lanes. And we did go a slightly wider sidewalk on both the south and the north sides of the roadway again, just because we're, we're curb-tight there again, and wanting to try to make the sidewalks just a little bit more comfortable. And then finally, Segment Four at the bottom. This is in that zone where we have the existing improvements on the north side and then really looking to finish those improvements off on the south side. Yes, Chair? Oh, I think you're muted, Chair.
Sorry, too many things to unclick. If I understand this one right, on the diagram at the top facing east, the little graphic for the, underneath the white pickup truck is a turn lane versus a three-lane traffic.
That's a really good catch. Yes, that should actually be a, an arrow pointing up in this case. Yes, thank you. That's a good clarification. All right. Okay, next slide, please. And we thought it would be helpful just to show in a map view how those different kinds of bike facilities lay out in this alternative. So again, back in the PCC Campus area here at the west end of the project. So we would be continuing or essentially having that existing ten-foot wide multi-use path on the north side of the roadway and then completing a six-foot buffered bike lane. I'm sorry, and there would, there is a, is and would be a buffered bike lane on the north side of the road in this alternative. And then on the south side, we would have both the on-street buffered bike lane plus finishing off any sidewalk gaps with a six-foot sidewalk there. Next slide, please. So now in the east half of the project, so again, the multi-use path currently continues to the edge of the PCC Campus on the north side. We would have the on-street buffered bike lane there, of course. And then continuing east across Segment Two and most of Segment Three, we would have an eight-foot wide sidewalk on the north side with the buffered bike lane. And then as we get further east on the north side, we have the existing sidewalk and, and just tie back into that. On the south side, we would be proposing, again, finishing off the on-street buffered bike lanes and six-foot sidewalks anywhere. We don't currently have a sidewalk. And again, the one exception would be the slightly wider sidewalk, eight feet across the culvert area. Any questions on that yet? All right. Next slide, please. So now we'll look at Alternative Two. Next slide. So the primary difference here is really going to be that in this second alternative, we have proposed providing the opportunity for a continuous multi-use path all the way through the project zone. And I'll note that the path changes sides of the roadway at a certain point, and we'll look at that when we get to the map view. But so again, in Segment One, at the top of the slide, you see the existing ten-foot path on the north side or the left side of the slide. And then in this case, we have a ten-foot path along the south side. And, and that ten-foot path would be east of one hundred and seventy-third Avenue only. And we'll come back and again, look at that in the map. It'll make more sense, I think. Segment Two, again, our pinch point. So this looks very similar to what you saw in the last segment. But I believe in this alternative, we did widen the sidewalk slightly on the south side to ten feet to keep that consistent ten-foot multi-use path with, through there. And in this case, it does, does have a, some, a little bit of additional impact on the property on the south side. And so does require a bit of a retaining wall there. Next slide, please. Again, very similar here at the culvert, two lanes of traffic. And again, a ten-foot, or I'm sorry, I think, I think we may have actually showed an eight-foot sidewalk at this point. Again, we're just doing what we can do to try to minimize the footprint through the natural area as we go across the, this culvert crossing. And then as we get back And then as we get back to the far eastern end, segment four, going back to the 10-foot multi-use path on the south side and the. On-street buffered bike lanes and throughout. Questions here? Okay, next slide, please. Oh, yes, Chair.
Sorry, I was trying to decide if I was brave enough to ask my question.
Be brave.
On an eight-foot sidewalk. Can you really fit three people across like that? Graphic shows the top graphic.
Yeah, I think I think so. I I walk, my family and I walk on a on a circle around our house and we have areas with a six-foot sidewalk and areas with a five-foot sidewalk. With a five-foot sidewalk, it's just too tight to really walk side by side. On a six-foot sidewalk, it just provides just enough extra space that it it feels comfortable to do that. So I think with an eight-foot, it's a it's a pretty comfortable. For three people.
Okay.
I I think maybe, excuse me, I didn't put my hand up. I think maybe Stephen, what what might be a bit confusing too is that you have the same graphic for people on the 10-foot as you do on the eight-foot. And they look like they're in the same distance. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yep. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Because my only other point of comparison was looking, you know, and and being a far more frequent rider of bicycle lanes. Right? Knowing that. You know, there there are places where there's just four feet and I'm a little bit more aware of that. When I'm on my bike. So I was trying to imagine eight feet with two people with me proceeding on my bike with two people next to me. And I was just having trouble getting my mind around it. So comparing the upper and the lower like Commissioner Treese mentioned, but. Yeah, nope. No issue. I was just having trouble getting my head around it. Thank you.
No, great, great question. Okay, let's go on to the next slide. And again, we'll see this alternative shown in the map. And so again, what's what's unique or different in this alternative? Again, we continue the multi-use path on the north side along the PCC campus. And then there's an existing mid-block pedestrian crossing at 173rd Avenue that has rectangular flashing beacon. And that was installed a few years ago as well. And so in this scenario, we would actually use that existing pedestrian crossing as the location to take. Folks across the street and then continue with a multi-use path on the south side of the roadway here. And again, where we don't have the multi-use path on the south side, again, we'd be finishing off sidewalks, any missing gaps with a six-foot sidewalk there. And again, buffered on-street bike lanes in both on both sides. And in this case, then, you know, we could look at continuing with an eight-foot sidewalk on the north side. Space is not so much the issue along the PCC frontage here because it is fairly open. We don't get constrained until we get into segment two. Next slide. Clicked clicked through. Can we go back to? Thank you. There we go. So again, in this case, continuing with the eight eight-foot sidewalk along the north side with the buffered bike lane makes rather the 10-foot mixed use or shared use path on the south side. And again, narrowing that path potentially down at the culvert crossing on the south side to eight feet, just again, trying to trying to minimize that environmental impact and footprint through that section there. And then the multi-use path could extend over to Joss and 165th Avenue. And then at that point, the existing improvements further to the east, we would need to. Transition folks on to the six-foot existing six-foot sidewalks or into into using the bike lane if they're on a bike there. Any questions at this point before we move on? All right. Next slide then. So we'll take a look now at a. Yep, there we go. And one more. And so we typically try to put together a comparison matrix and look at the two alternatives, the criteria that you see there, those are from the resolution and order. And so we. Try to identify the level of cyclist separation, if you will, from vehicular traffic. And in the case we've done these, it's one through four is the scale and four tends to be like in the top row, the the most protection from vehicles. If you will, or separation from vehicles and under stormwater management are in some cases, we find that different alternatives may trigger. Significant additional stormwater catch basin requirements. And then drainage as well. And then right-of-way impacts, ease of maintenance. And then we also want to be mindful again, as we're thinking about transit routes that we. Are intentional about ensuring that any. Transit stops are facilitated safely so that where you may be mixing up some potential cycle traffic on on an off-street facility that we accommodate that with our with our transit. You know, boarding and onboarding, offboarding, onboarding and offboarding. And then we look at cost estimates for the two projects. And so what you're seeing here is that the first alternative, which is the buffered bike lanes and sidewalks. That we believe pencils out to about a $12.7 million total project cost estimate. With alternative two, we anticipate that number potentially increasing up to about 13.9 million. And again, you'll see the differences. There's some right-of-way differential. The construction cost estimate increases probably around, it looks like 800,000 or so. And then the design costs are going to be slightly higher as well. So that makes up the the difference there. Next slide. So we have been out, we've had an online open house and we've been to CPO seven to talk about the project. So the next couple of slides, we'll take a look at at what we've heard so far. Next slide, please. So as I said, we held an online open house in October, we had about 320 visitors and about 49 comments that were submitted through the online open house portal. And in 17 of those responses, we actually had commenters who expressed a preference for a particular kind of bike facility. So we had. Six that preferred the buffered bike lanes with the six to eight-foot sidewalks. So that would be sort of consistent with our alternative one that we previewed with you. We had two comments that preferred to have the buffered bike lanes with the wider sidewalks, 10-foot sidewalks. Two, the preferred buffered bike lane and six-foot sidewalk on the north side and a cycle track on the south side. So a cycle track being typically a. Raised bike lane is a good way to think about it. So something like you see on. The streets in South Hillsborough. So Cornelius Pass Road, south of TB Highway and Blanton Street through the South Hillsborough area are good examples of that. We had six comments that preferred buffered bike lanes with 10-foot sidewalk on the north side and the cycle track on the south side. And then one comment in favor of using cycle tracks on both sides of the roadway. Next slide. And then there were 32 additional responses where there wasn't a clear preference stated for a bicycle facility particularly, but we did hear a variety of comments, some saying no bike lanes. And I suspect that was probably in regard to trying to minimize property impacts. Narrow vehicle travel lanes. Again, I'm sure aimed at reducing the overall footprint and impacts. Some would like to see larger landscaped areas. Some apparently said no landscaped area. And some response, or at least I think it was one response, if that's right, Joe, maybe for a no build. Just sort of leave things the way they are. Next slide. So our staff and Andy Morris actually attended the CPO seven meeting in December, and I believe Commissioner Treese, I think you were there as well. And we had a variety of questions that were asked about sound analysis. Was a sound analysis conducted? Do the traffic counts that we shared with you earlier consider. A future Shackelford Road extension from North Bethany going west to 185th Avenue. And questions about are there opportunities to reduce the project footprint? So reducing the vehicle lane widths and maybe the width of the pedestrian and bike facilities to help minimize again, those property impacts and tree removals. And some specific questions from folks on the south side about whether their driveway access would be retained as a part of the project. We can talk briefly through those responses, but they are available on the project website that we posted there. Maybe I'll just say very briefly that sound analysis was not conducted in this case, the policy that the county has where we're not adding. Additional through vehicle lanes typically noise analysis is not conducted as a part of a road improvement project. The future traffic counts, we don't anticipate a lot of difference between traffic volumes with or without the future extension of Shackelford Road to the north. We think a lot of the folks that are using Springville Road are people who would not otherwise utilize. A Shackelford Road extension overall. We are taking the opportunity, as I mentioned earlier, to look at reducing the project footprint to the extent that we can. We obviously want to be conscientious about the impacts that the project is having both on the environment and on adjacent properties. And so we do do take the opportunity to. Look at look at those options. And then we do intend to maintain driveway access for the most part on the south side of the roadway. As a part of this project. Next slide. So the staff recommendation, next slide. Essentially, we're proposing the first alternative that we talked about, which is to use on-street buffered bike lanes. And really viewing this project as completing or stitching together the improvements that have been completed on both ends of the project. Both to the east and the west, where we do have the on-street buffered bike lane facilities extending the or retaining the the 10-foot path along the north side adjacent to the PCC frontage. And then stitching together any missing sidewalk gaps throughout the rest of the project zone. Next slide, please. And again, these are just those cross sections. We probably don't need to go through these again at the moment, but we certainly can come back to these. Let's go ahead, I think, two more slides, maybe to the map. So again, this is just the map again, reflecting what we saw with alternative one. Again, buffered on-street bike lanes on both sides, 10-foot path along the PCC frontage on the north side, stitching together any missing sidewalk gaps with six-foot sidewalk on the south. And advance one more slide, please. Other way. There we go. Thank you. And so then transitioning to eight-foot sidewalk across segments two and three, back to existing sidewalk on the north side and then. Six-foot sidewalk with just again, the slightly wider eight-foot segment across the across the culvert there where the sidewalk needs to be immediately adjacent to the bike lane. And one more slide, I believe. So back to our discussion questions. Does the board concur with the recommendation? Or as I asked earlier, is there any additional info that might be helpful for you to further further deliberations on this? And of course, we're happy to go back and look at any of these as as you may have questions or an opportunity to do that. And is there maybe one more slide? Nope, that was it. Okay. Thank you.
Good presentation, a lot there.
Indeed, thank you.
Who would like to go first? Thank you, Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, I I really don't have anything, Stephen. Good job on this. It is, there's a lot of detail in there. See after we kind of stay focused on. On the size of the sidewalks and all those things, but I I would agree with your. Your recommendation there for number one. So that's all I have on that. I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Who's next? Go ahead, Commissioner Fibah. We're having a really hard time hearing you.
You hear me?
Sorry. How we can.
My ear pods. Is it better now?
Yes, ma'am.
I I was just saying, I echo Commissioner Willie's sentiment. I don't have any questions and I support the recommendation Stephen is making.
Commissioner Rogers or Commissioner Treese? Nothing from Commissioner Rogers. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
This Stephen, thank you for this presentation. It's a. Stephen is so calm. It's it's a it's a good representation of what the project is. And this is that final bridge between. The different components of the project, which makes it really important. It's still, there there are some issues with the property owners and, you know, I I want to make sure that we're just recognizing that in terms of. Right-of-way issues and things that need to happen. One question, Stephen. We were talking about narrowing the center turn lane. Is that is that happening as well?
Yeah, we so so with this project, we're actually sort of consistent with the upcoming update to the road standards. We're actually proposing lane widths that are narrower than our current adopted road standards for all of the lanes on the. Well, all of the vehicular lanes, I should say, on the project and bike facilities that are actually wider than our current standards require. But and then I think there, as you saw in across the culvert, we we definitely know that it's possible to eliminate the center turn lane at that location, which again, helps reduce the overall footprint to minimize that environmental impact. I know there's some interest in considering whether the turn lane could be eliminated through the curve in the roadway where we do have our tight pinch point there. And our concern is that we have, we have a driveway. It's the only way in and out of a of a neighborhood at Samuel Drive, right there at the pinch point. And so and transit stops at that location. So. We do have some real safety concerns about eliminating the center turn lane through that area, but it is a part of an ongoing evaluation that we're looking at just to see if if we think that there are any opportunities there to try to help minimize that that footprint.
And I just, I just want to say that. I I I put safety as a number one priority as we all do. And so I I just want to make sure that we're addressing that. And again, thank you, Stephen. I I just wanted to give the commission a little bit of a flavor of what's going on here, not, you know, as well. So. It's welcome to District Two. This is kind of the way we do things in District Two.
Great. Well, I just have a couple of questions. On the map, am I correct in remembering that the church on the south. Side of Springville is to the west of 178? I was looking at the.
Yeah, if you could go backward one slide, I think that'll that'll show it for us.
It's just a smidge off the screen.
Exactly. Yeah, it's just on the west side of 178th Avenue.
Okay, okay. And you may have the following information on the project page, and I forgot to look there. But at some point, I would just appreciate knowing the length of Phase Four. And then the length of the Kaiser to Springville extent. Oops, I think Joe Youngkins might have some info.
I'm working with the Indians. We're sharing the bigger space.
I don't need it at the moment. Just send me an email. That'll be great.
Yeah, we can. We can definitely follow up with an email. And yeah, that's a good, good point to include that on the on the project page.
So. If I had it to do over again, you know, if I'd been on the commission way back when, when Phase One, Two, and Three were worked on. Given the fact that there's a park along this entire extent, not for Phase Four, but the entire extent includes. Not only PCC, but a park and the the huge park on the PCC campus and all of the the different neighborhoods. And knowing that there's an elementary school and the distances that both elementary, middle, and high school students, plus college students. Travel, whether it's walking, taking the bus, or bicycling is really impressive. But in my ideal world. I really would have wanted to see a multi-use path in the. But in my ideal world, I really would have wanted to see a multi-use path in the entire Kaiser-Springville extent, which is, is quite a bit for me to say because in my first, I'd say 10 years of my elected career, I wasn't a big fan of multi-use paths. But the more I traveled and experienced them, not only here in our region, but elsewhere in the US as well as the world, I'm a big fan of them now. And it's part of my active transportation championing. That said, however, what we're talking about is Phase Four. And I think that the team really did a good job of looking at some levels of consistency and integration with the prior phases. And the different variables that have been considered. So, you know, we don't have the, the density of community amenities as we do, for example, in the Thompson-Kenny Road area, which is why I think it's palatable for me to support the recommendation for Alternative One. I think if we had to do it over again, the difference between the two amortize that over 20 years, and it's negligible. So I think, given the, the number of, of people, number of families that live in that area, yeah, you probably, you know, would have wanted at some point, or would have wanted in the past, a multi-use path. But that isn't, isn't consistent with how the process has gone. I can only hope that we will, as an agency, be able to put more multi-use path in, paths in other places where we do have quite a bit of, of density of traffic going on as well as community amenities. But yeah. So, yeah. I can live with Alternative One, doesn't mean I'm proud of it, but I can certainly live with it.
Understand.
Great. Well, I think we're all, all on board then.
Great, thank you so much.
That brings us to the end of today's work session agenda. Is there anything else from commissioners or from leadership today that we need to touch on? Okay, seeing none, well, join or join, well adjourn today's work session of Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. Thanks, folks, see you next week.